Let's call this meeting to order and stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Roll call.
Honorable Mayor Ron Schaver.
Here.
Councilmember Dan Marler.
Here.
Christine Casto.
Here.
Allison Howe.
Here.
Clint Anderson.
Here.
Lisa Northrup.
Here.
Kevin Lindell.
Here.
Okay, first item on our agenda is the second reading. This is a public hearing for making a final adjustments to our 2016 budget. This is a public hearing, so please keep public comments to the issues before the city council. Each speaker has been asked to limit their comment time to three minutes unless other speakers represent a group of citizens, in which event additional time may be allotted. Please respect these limitations, and I reserve the right to limit public comment that is inappropriate under the guidelines and otherwise improper. I also reserve the right to limit testimony or questioning that is repetitive, cumulative, argumentative, or not pertinent to the issues, and to set a time limit on the duration of testimony if I determine that it be necessary in the light of a number of people who have signed up to testify. First is the issue of legal notice. Mr. Brennan, has it been properly noticed?
Yes, Your Honor, a legal notice of this public hearing appeared in the Fort Morgan Times on June 28th.
Next presentation on the ordinance, Mr. Wells.
Yes, Your Honor, the ordinance sits before you was properly drafted and reviewed by our city attorney, Jason Myers, and numbers prepared by Jeanne Kenny, our treasurer. And these are the numbers that are necessary for us to comply with our local and state laws to have a balanced budget for 2016 and also to adopt our audit. And this represents all of what was spent in 2016 and all approved by city council prior to expenditure.
Okay. Next we'll hear public comment. Is there anybody who wishes to speak on this issue? If there's no one who wishes to speak on this issue, I'd ask the city clerk if he received any written or oral comments that had been submitted to your office prior to this meeting?
No, Your Honor.
Are there any questions from the council or discussion on the issue? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Your Honor, I would offer a motion to close the public hearing.
Second. I have a motion by Christine Casto, a second by Kevin Lindell. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Myers.
Counsel has the following options. They can set this over for another day. You can approve the ordinance or deny on second reading or deny on second reading. As Mr. Wells mentioned before, this helps keep us compliant with state and local law.
I would entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I offer a resolution approving the second and final reading of ordinance number 1193, approving final adjustments to the 2016 budget and authorization to publish by title only.
Second.
A resolution by Allison Howe and a second by Christine Casto. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Next, we have a presentation on possible action on acceptance of the 2016 financial audit. Ms. Kenny.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We're just asking for a final approval of the financial audit that you've already had two drafts of. And you will have an actual, once you've approved it, you'll have an actual fancy copy that you'll be able to keep with you at all times. Not necessarily. But anyway, all we need is acceptance of the audit. And there were a few minor changes, one of which was found by our city clerk slash accountant, John Brennan, in the last version, and so it was just a footing error. But the auditors have assured me that there isn't anything of any, you know, import that they found, just, you know, minor.
The numbers were pretty much the same.
The numbers will be the same, yeah. Okay.
Does anybody have any questions?
I have a quick question for all of our friends watching at home. So the audit is important for the city financially because it helps us with, while we're repaying our loans, or yeah, just can you summarize why it's so important that we do this process?
The audit is an assurance that our financial information is in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles and also with regard to the governmental accounting standards board. So we have to do this. We're required to have an audit. And the audit just assures that the information we've been keeping is being done in the proper manner. And it's insurance to the public, to also to borrowers, of course. I mean lenders, we're the borrower, but lenders, it's important for them to know that the information in our audit is correct, so that then when they rely on the numbers and give us loans, that it'll be correct.
Thank you so much and for all your hard work.
Oh, sure. The people of the whole finance department, the fund.
The fund department.
Actually did it, yeah.
Any other comments, questions? I would entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I would offer a resolution accepting the final 2016 financial audit.
Second.
A resolution by Lisa Northrup and a second by Allison Howe. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
One other thing to add to that, Your Honor. The Genes Group did a really good job this year, and they've continually gotten better at, with the audit processes and trying to get it done faster. And one of the really important aspects of the audit and the budget is it provides transparency for the public. What you approve to allow us to spend, the public's money, is all available to the public so they can see what you've approved. And the audit is basically the test. Did we spend it in accordance with what council approved? Because one of the, you know, generally accepted principles that they look at was, were the expenditures made in the last year in accordance with the budget and approved by city council? So there's a governance component to the audit that they look at. And so it's for transparency and to assure the public that the money that we receive by way of taxes, fees, and other grants and other things is being spent in a responsible and a legal way. And so that is one of the things that we are very proud of when we get an audit back that's clean like this, is it demonstrates to the public that they can have trust in their government, that we're spending their money the way that council, who represents the people, has approved.
Next, we have a presentation on programs and projects from the Fort Morgan Cultural Cultures United for Progress. Mr. Miller?
Mr. Miller's taken a night off, so I'll cover for Mr. Miller. Tonight, we have representatives from FM Cup, which stands for Fort Morgan Cultures United for Progress. And this is a really neat experience for us tonight because they've put together a short presentation where they will have various members of the community get up and talk about what they're doing to help our community and some of the projects they're doing. So I'm not sure, Lauren, I guess, we'll turn it over to you to start the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello, I am Emily Eby, for those of you that don't know me, and I am a resident team member for Fort Morgan Cultures United for Progress. And so I'd just like to thank you all so much for allowing us to speak tonight. That's on behalf of both Fort Morgan Cultures United for Progress and for the Colorado Trust. And Fort Morgan Cultures United for Progress, or as we warmly refer to it as FM Cup, because it's a long name, began with the Colorado Trust's mission of creating health equity to, for all people of Colorado. And so our mission with FM Cup is to create a grassroots effort where the people of Fort Morgan, representing all of its diverse populations, come together to improve health equity. From inception, we, as a team of about 40, have narrowed down our focus to three main topic areas: education, recreation, and housing, which we are looking at through the lens of communication, culture, and belonging. This was a huge win in and of itself, as this started with many interviews in March of 2015, and it culminated in about 14 different topic areas. So going from 14 different topic areas to four was not only big because we were decreasing it by so much, but what you'll learn tonight is that we had four different languages being spoken in every one of our meetings. So we had Somali, French, Spanish, and English. So it took quite a bit, you know, to kind of get there. What we've learned through this process is that our overt goal is how to create health equity, but the byproduct, or even really the main product, is how we bring many cultures together to foster a sense of belonging and support. I'd like to mention that it isn't by chance that I was asked to introduce FM Cup. I moved here about four years ago. I'm a white woman. I'm educated. I married into someone whose family has been here their whole lives. So for me, coming into Fort Morgan, I easily learn the systems. I made friends very easily. I got, you know, employment quite easily. And so that's going to be really juxtaposed with the different people that you're going to hear tonight. And with that, I would like to introduce Gwyn Barley. Gwyn is the Vice President of Community Partnership and Grants for the Colorado Trust.
Good evening, and thank you, Honorable Mayor Schaver, and esteemed Fort Morgan City Council and the staff. I recognize all the staff. I have a master's in planning, so I've had some history in front of city councils in the past. And thank you for this valuable time to be in conversation with you. As you heard, my name is Gwyn Barley. I serve the Colorado Trust as the Vice President of Community Partnerships and Grants. And it's a pleasure to be here with the Fort Morgan Cultures United for Progress team tonight. When the nonprofit PSL Healthcare System, Presbyterian St. Luke's, was sold to a for-profit organization in 1985, the proceeds of the sale were used to create the Colorado Trust. And the Colorado Trust is a foundation dedicated exclusively to the health of the people of Colorado. We only fund in Colorado. And since that time, the trust has worked closely with communities and nonprofit organizations in every county across the state to improve the health and well-being of Coloradans. And that's ranged from bringing the 911 emergency medical care to 38 Colorado counties, including Morgan County, to helping to foster the development of the state's second-largest regional transportation district in the Roaring Fork Valley. So if you've ever been up and down that valley, you've ridden buses for which we helped to bring to life, and of course, much more. Fort Morgan has been the recipient of over $1.3 million from the Colorado Trust since 1988. So we kind of like funding things here, would I would say. More recently, the trust began a new strategy which is aimed at empowering resident-led decision-making and initiatives that advance health equity at the community level throughout Colorado. So we're presently partnering with 16 communities, and we hope to be working with 20 or so more by 2020. So we hope to be up around, in the upper 30s to 40 communities around Colorado. And presently, our communities that we're working with are spread out all over the state. This approach to philanthropy is actually quite different from the traditional approaches that we've used in the past. You, we, you're familiar with sort of the funding of the nonprofit sector. We arrive, we say, this is what we think we should be funding, and ambitious nonprofits write grants and write, you know, write funding proposals and get funded. And we, as we looked back and really reflected on our work and our body of work, we realized that we'd not, we were not making the long-term difference that we really aspire to make throughout Colorado, and that we needed to approach the way we do our work differently. So in this community partnership strategy, we work with teenagers, young adults, parents, seniors, veterans, newcomers, long-term residents, and really anyone interested in shaping the future of their own towns and cities. And we seek a diversity of experiences and lives to fully represent the community. So when we, when we talk about seating the resident table, we look exactly for the diversity that you're seeing here tonight. We want to hear the voices of all the people that live in a community and understand those lived experiences. So we ask residents who represent those many facets and diversity of the community, what makes your community great? We start with a conversation about what's its greatness, and what makes it a tough place to live, and why, and what could make it better and why? I simplify those questions. They've been through a much more intense process and are in the middle of that right now. But we believe it shouldn't be up to a person or a funder sitting behind a desk in Denver, which I do, and to decide what's best for this community. And we believe residents are the experts on the places where they live. That, for us, is fundamentally different. So we are in all these different communities, working on a whole range of different issues, which is really great for us because they're issues we hadn't worked on before. And our goal is to help communities like Fort Morgan work toward their vision for a healthy and prosperous future. And that would be for all people, but especially those that are experiencing more inequity that contribute to shorter lifespans, less productive lives, and actually impact the health and welfare of the overall community. Sort of that old adage, when someone is suffering in the community, we're all suffering at some level. And so there's not, there's this opportunity, that's really what health equity is about, is to, is to do more for those that are experiencing less. I thank you for your time. I'm to be brief, and I am. And with that, I'm going to introduce Carolina Landeros.
So can you all check? Now is when you'll want to make sure that you have your technology on and that you can hear, is it Jess Lee? Okay. I'm Jess Lee. And I'll just remind Carolina to speak slowly. One of the challenges is that we're not just going from Spanish to English, but Nima back there is actually going, waiting for the English to go to Somali. So it's a process.
Yeah.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Carolina Landeros. Soy casada. Tengo dos hijos que este ciclo escolar estarán en noveno y onceavo grado en high school. Nosotros nos mudamos de México aquí a Fort Morgan hace menos de dos años, durante los cuales yo estudié dos semestres en el programa AVE. Y ahorita estoy por comenzar el segundo semestre de business aquí en MCC. Para lograrlo, mi esposo ha tenido que trabajar muy duro en car heal, aunque el ingreso que él percibe ahí a veces no es suficiente para cubrir todos nuestros gastos familiares. Ha sido muy difícil para mis hijos como para mí estudiar en este país, primero por el idioma, segundo por el sentido de pertenecer, y tercero por el desconocimiento del sistema educativo. Por ejemplo, a veces yo no estoy segura si mis hijos están ahorita tomando las clases necesarias para graduarse de la escuela e ir posteriormente a la universidad. Yo personalmente, el semestre pasado, pude obtener mejores calificaciones si hubiera entendido bien mi horario de clases, ya que por no haberlo entendido bien, falte dos o tres veces a una de mis clases, y esto se reflejó en mi calificación final. Por ahora yo tengo beca, pero no estoy segura si mis hijos la tendrán el día de mañana, ya que, por ejemplo, este año el MCC ha sufrido un recorte presupuestal, y no sé si eso vaya a empeorar en los años siguientes. También hemos tenido apoyo educativo con el programa Ready. Es un programa para las familias inmigrantes que patrocinaba Centennial Voices, pero parece que este ciclo escolar ya no lo tendremos. Por último, yo quisiera estar segura que una vez que me gradué en MCC, pueda encontrar aquí en Morgan un trabajo en el que gane lo suficiente para ayudar en la economía de mi hogar y en la educación de mis hijos, ya que considero que esta es una comunidad sana para que mis hijos crezcan y se queden aquí. Y al obtener un diploma, ayudar en la comunidad y retribuirle un poco de lo que nos ha dado. Gracias. Por mi parte es todo. A continuación les presento a mi compañero Arnold Akely.
I'm Arnold Akely. I'm a native of Benet in Africa, the West. I came to the United States in 2013, and I installed in Fort Morgan in 2014. It was not easy for me and my family. The problem of language was very profound. It was a great barrier to the soul, whether it was for education or accommodation. It was first necessary to find a place to stay with my family because I didn't have anyone else to turn around, except my friend who welcomed me. I applied for accommodation, I came to a rental apartment, and it took a year before I was given. For a while, I had to leave Aurora to Fort Morgan all the days for work. A lot of property owners wanted to rent to white people like me. Finally, I could rent a house for a new guest because it was available. All this and all these obstacles made me strong and determined. I decided to break the barrier, to get used to this place, a place for my family. After a year, after a rental apartment, I moved to the old place for a new year. Now, a lot of challenges have begun. I did extra hours to meet the needs of my family. I'm married with five children. My income is above the limit, and I'm no longer qualified to stay at this place. We have to move again. With my family, we decided to buy a house. You have to really budgetize and confront what we call credit story. Finally, I was able to buy my house. What I wanted to say about all my history is that it's not easy if you're not welcome somewhere. Fort Morgan Cup has been and is a family adoptive for me. I knew who to turn around to give me advice and guide me. You also have to know where to find the necessary information for each thing. Only by listening to your voice, a property owner can refuse his mortgage. Why refuse a person's mortgage just because it's a white or an immigrant? I can still try to understand some arguments of property owners. Yes, things are bad. Why not prepare people to use resources rather than letting them be left alone? We have the same needs, whether we're white or black. We all have the need for accommodation. Merci. Now, I would like to introduce Timira Hassan.
Hi, everyone. I'm Timira Hassan, currently working with JBS full-time job and one of organizer in Colorado Trust part-time. Back in my home country, I used to work with International Organization for Migration called IOM. I used to be a community assistant for six years. I left my, I left my kids back in my home country. I came to Fort Morgan July 2014 and joined my husband, who was here for 10 years. When I came to Fort Morgan, I was just in between, I was just in, sorry. I came to join to my husband in Fort Morgan, who was here for 10 years. We had restaurant in Fort Morgan. When I came to Fort Morgan, I was just in between my house and my restaurant. But when I joined Colorado Trust as a community organizer, I start meeting with different people with different race, religion aspect in the community. I'm thankful to this beautiful organization who are here to bring up community interaction within our communities, including our police chief and commander, who were there to protect the whole community, especially during the Ramadan time, when they, when they join us also in celebration. So I'm thankful to everyone. Thank you.
So in conclusion, our purpose for being here today is really to enlist your help. As city council members, you are our representatives. But in order to represent a community that looks very different than it did some years ago, we ask that you start to look at the makeup of your groups, of your boards, of your committees. Is there a Somali, a French African, a Hispanic, a non-Christian representation? And if not, may... And if not, maybe there's room for one more. When you're deciding on public policy, are you looking through the lens of what the policy may mean for our minority populations? Tonight, we're having you use this language technology so you can understand the challenges that are faced by many of the non-English speaking residents. Well, to that end, we'd like to challenge you. Here's the challenge. We would like you all to go into a business that's run by a Hispanic or a Somali or a minority business leader and introduce yourself. You've got a great intro right now because Timira has a restaurant, so there you go. But at the same time, when you introduce yourself, tell them who you are and what the city council does. Maybe you could invite them to a meeting or to be part of on a committee. We'd also, if... So if you're feeling right now a little bit queasy about doing that, you can probably imagine what it feels like to be someone who is from Africa or from Mexico and going into their first stores. Or even for me, from Boulder. I've lived in Boulder for three years and I cannot tell you the amount of people that look at me with either pity or disdain because I lived in the Republic of Boulder. So, our true hope is that in time, when each of you look at your Facebook friends, when we all look at our Facebook friends, when we look at events in the city, when we look at the makeup of the city council, that we're seeing a diverse group that really represents all the diversity that is in Fort Morgan. So again, thank you all so much for your time and we'd just like to open the floor up to ask any questions in whatever language you would like. We have lots of translators here, so that's about it.
Well, I'd like to thank you for coming and presenting to council and to the community. It was a very enlightening experience, to say the least. There's definitely trials and tribulations. I have been to a foreign country where it's an outsider and I know it is, it's intimidating, to say the least. So, whatever we can do to assist, we would be more than happy. So, like I said, I appreciate your coming in front of council and sharing with us what you're about and what you do.
I have a quick question. So first, thank you so much for being here tonight. I loved hearing everyone's stories and the goals for moving forward. My question is about timelines. So with Fort Morgan Cultures United for Progress, I know funding right now is coming from the Colorado Trust. As far as long-term, what are some of your goals and where this group will be in a year from now?
Okay, I think I can talk to some of that. One of the things we've learned as a foundation in this work is that we don't control the clock anymore like we used to and communities need to take the time that they need to take. Fort Morgan's actually a very organized community and is making tremendous progress. And the way that we began the work was in a, what we call the development phase, then we went into a planning phase, which is where this community is right now, and then they will go into an implementation phase and that phase will last at a minimum five more years.
Great.
So this is long-term work. It's hard to undo things that have been in place for a very long time. So, we're very patient and we see ourselves in this work for a long time. Does that help answer your question?
Yeah. And if someone who's in the community group here could talk about your current project with the Pop-Up Center or anyone who's watching at home to hear if you want to publicize your work with the Pop-Up Center, anyone?
Sure, we're so excited about the project.
Our friends at home can't hear you.
Let me take that opportunity to invite all of you to the Pop-Up Center. Our open house was last Friday night and the Pop-Up Community Center is a collaboration with One Morgan County. It will last for one month. We're in the center at 218 Main, right next door to La Michoacana, and our charge is to offer alternative multicultural activities and opportunities for folks throughout the community to come together and share what they do for recreation and share their skills and share some yoga and some zumba. And we just have folks from every culture group and every age coming in and spending time together at the Pop-Up Community Center.
And what are the hours for the Pop-Up Center?
We are there Monday through Friday, nine to eight. The morning is really devoted to a leisure time. We'll have computers where folks can come and work on computers. And then we have varying classes in the afternoons. Limited hours on the weekends right now, but yeah, Monday through Friday, we would love for you to come down and visit us at the Pop-Up Center.
In our local group, one of the challenges that Emily had made is to have people go into some of these other businesses. One of the areas that we struggle in all communities is knowing what businesses we have out there. I mean, if that's something that the FM Cup group could help facilitate is knowing that at such and such an address is, you know, La Michelina.
Right.
We all know it's the ice cream.
Yeah.
But if you don't know what some of those are because of the language barrier, because we look at it and you don't...
Right.
I mean, I think that would be helpful and I think you would, you know, I think we would get council members would be open to... I just don't know where I'm walking into and if it's a store or it's...
And I so appreciate that and we would be happy to make a list of the many locally-owned businesses because there are so many that are owned and operated by our local Latina, Latino, Somali, West African folks in town. So yeah, I'd be happy to provide you with a list of those businesses with addresses and really welcome you to come out and visit those folks. It's the best fruit in town that you can get over on railroad. Yeah, we'd love for you to...
Then we can, and like I was just asking Jeff, we can share that information which will help get that out to the rest of the community besides just your city council members. So you'll get more people, that'll go on, you know, because sometimes you just...
Absolutely. We will provide a list of those businesses.
Fantastic.
And we're working on a business licensing program too, which would be helpful as well so that people who come and start a business can get a license, but also part of that licensing is that then we have a publicly accessible list of businesses. Pero tengo una pregunta en español. ¿Cómo podemos incluir más personas en las cosas que hacemos en la ciudad, a las personas que hablan español o otras lenguas? Porque aquí hablamos inglés pero están otros que hablan español pero no están muchos personas que hablan español. Yo no hablo mucho bien pero yo quiero ser como podemos hacerlo a las otras personas en nuestra comunidad.
¿Por dónde es para mí, verdad?
Sí, sí. O otra persona que hable español.
Uno momento.
The mayor habla también.
Perfect.
So, my question was, most of us speak English, some of us do speak Spanish, but what is it that we can do to be more inclusive of the people that speak other languages? You know, how can we, can we help them speak English? Can we help them speak our language? What are the things that we can do to help people be more included in what we do in our community?
Gracias. Primero que todo quiero agradecerles su interés primero en hablar en español porque es algo con lo que los latinos nos encontramos que muchas personas no lo hacen, algunos lo saben pero no lo quieren hablar. Y para contestar su pregunta, precisamente estamos trabajando en Colorado Trust para ver la manera de incluir a los latinos porque desafortunadamente muchas de las veces los latinos, sobre todo las personas indocumentadas, no acuden a, como a este tipo de reuniones porque piden permiso en sus trabajos y yo me he topado con personas, con padres de familia que no acuden porque cuando piden permiso en el trabajo, su manager les, no les da el permiso y al contrario los amenaza con que, "If you miss this day, you'll be incarcerated for two days." Entonces ya serían tres días de pérdida económica para la familia y volviendo al tema de ser indocumentados es mucho más difícil, este, conseguir trabajo donde se gane lo suficiente para, para contribuir, para sacar los gastos familiares. Eso sería, a mi parecer, uno de los motivos.
Oh, we can hear. We can hear.
Que las invitaciones o los eventos que se hacen en la ciudad se hicieran en español en algunos casos. Otro sería, precisamente por eso es que nos presentamos para, en lo sucesivo, nuestra meta es atender estas juntas y poder venir, sentarnos ahí y traer nuestro equipo para que ellos se sientan cómodos, tanto los que no hablan inglés como ya sea en español o Somali o francés, para nosotros traducirles y que se sientan cómodos y poder participar porque la barrera del lenguaje es una cárcel para nosotros, sí? No podemos dar un paso fuera porque no sabemos qué va a pasar. Pero ya si hay alguien que nos guíe o entendemos algo, algunas palabras, o sabemos que en este caso ustedes están diciendo "Nos gustaría que hubiera más participación," nos sentimos más cómodos, sí? Nuestro trabajo va a ser ahora decir a la gente, puedes ir, no te va a pasar nada, nadie te va a decir nada, no te van a ver cómo si llegastes de Marte sino que eres parte de la comunidad de Fort Morgan y puedes participar. Ya también ustedes hicieron cuenta que no hacemos mucho desorden con el equipo, que es algo que no necesitamos estar gritando o esa que pueda interrumpir la información que se está dando. Entonces, mil gracias por su pregunta y créame que vamos a andar más seguido por aquí, los españoles, Somali, francés. Gracias.
Gracias. Porque hacemos servicios por todos en la comunidad, es importante que tenemos las personas que trabajan por nosotros, pero es difícil por nosotros a buscar, to find, no, yo no sé cómo decir, to find, buscar las personas que tienen la educación, cualificaciones para hacer el trabajo. Pero tenemos personas, utility billing, porque casi todas las personas deben pagar utility bills. La policía, somos siempre buscando las personas que hablan español, por the police department.
Policía.
Policía, por la policía. You understand that? Muchas gracias por tus palabras.
I'd just like to say that I commend what you're doing. I work at Salud Clinic and so I deal with each of these languages usually via a third person or on the telephone if I have to. So I understand how limiting the language barriers, I'm reminded constantly with doing that, so I'm pleased to see that, you know, we're making efforts to try and get all of our community integrated and feeling more accepted and everything too, so I applaud your effort.
I applaud your effort too. I think it's great. I'm glad you all were able to come here today. I did notice at our last party in the park, it was where we provide music to the community, free meal. It's a great community event, but I noticed at the last one that it was very white. There was not much diversity at all and I think I saw two young African men, young men, who were across the street, but I didn't see anybody in the crowd of several hundred. I was a little disappointed and I've been pondering since, not sure why that is, if it's the food doesn't appeal to some of our minority groups or if the music doesn't appeal to our minority groups or if they haven't felt welcome or invited, but I would, I would love to see more of our minority groups come out to those events and so whatever advice I think we can get on how to make people feel welcome would be great.
And what day is the next one?
August 1st.
August 1st.
I really just want to thank you for asking that question and I, you know, we come to you and hope that we all start asking that question. It's why we're not seeing folks from other cultures in our restaurants and at our celebrations. So, we appreciate that and we hope to explore the answers to that question. We are planning to explore that and we hope in partnership to maybe explore some of those answers and solutions with you. So, thank you.
Yeah, I just hope that we can be more welcoming, I guess, to make people feel comfortable to be there.
So, thank you, I guess, for being here tonight and I'll let the mayor give you the final thanks, but one of the things that we're really trying to accomplish in the city of Fort Morgan, and I think we've done a really good job with it over the last several years, is being inclusive of all peoples and perspectives and I think what you're doing is very helpful to us and our community to help bring what our community is made up of together regardless of their language or anything else. I know how hard it is to go to another country and live and not speak the language and not know the culture and feel like you're on Mars and nobody knows, people look at you funny and all those things, but I know that it's even hard sometimes in small communities for white people to move in and not feel like an outsider. So, you know, I think, especially from Boulder.
There you go.
We like you anyways. So we understand, I think, more than you know how difficult it is to try and become a part of a community that's totally new, but we're here to help you and support you and we really want to work with FM Cup and the Colorado Trust to bring some things here that can, that can be helpful to all of us. So, thank you for being here tonight.
If I could ask one more question, you talked about programming. How can we find out about what the programming schedule is at the pop-up? Just go.
Right now it's posted in the window and it also is posted on our Facebook page. So if you access Facebook, our page is Fort Morgan Cultures United for Progress and it is posted on that Facebook page. And I believe it's in the community calendar each week in the times.
Thank you.
And if you have any friends that speak Italian, I speak Italian much better than I do Spanish, so it's just me and Carlo right now.
Well, you got a few more to try, Jeff. I know, we all do. So I would just like to concur with what Jeff and the other council people have said. We're very glad that you made the effort and came to council. We are a very diverse community with a smaller population than we have in Denver or the Republic of Boulder. We do have a very diverse community in Fort Morgan, so we applaud what you do and the sentiments of the council appears to be, we're in favor of what you're attempting to do. Thank you.
I'm going to gather your...
I think we had sent most of them down to the ends and... And after being in Boulder for four years, after being back here for over 35, I've learned to speak Fort Morgan again. I've learned to speak Fort Morgan again.
And feel free to stay for the rest of the budget session if you'd like. It's riveting.
Talking water. No takers on the budget.
Apparently finance is not fun for everyone. Not for everyone.
Okay, next on the agenda is 2018 budget calendar. Mr. Wells.
Yeah, we've got some great people lined up tonight to present and, you know, we can take them however they want to come. It looks like we've got... We only have, where's water, there's water treatment. Do we want to start with water treatment because I think that's first on the agenda? Yeah, so let's do the annual report and budget for the water treatment plant. That's the first, wait, no, wait, no, you're, I'm wrong, I jumped ahead. You're up, Eric.
I was gonna say...
Pretty much whoever shows up will turn to that page.
Okay, sounds good, I'm trying to make it as easy as we can here.
Sorry, I cleared the room out. Thank you, Mayor and Council. I want to talk about the water distribution budget. We've only got a couple of major changes on it, otherwise it's pretty much the same as it was last year. The first major change is we're looking to add a new full-time operator with the water department. With the size of the system growing every year now and we've added more hydrants, over two miles of pipe, more valves, which is a lot more to maintain. And then with the constant increase in the state regulations that seem to be coming down the pipe just about every year now, we've got more increased sampling, we've got our cross-connection control and backflow prevention stuff that we have to do now. So it's kind of the reason we're starting to get stretched a little thin trying to maintain everything. So we're looking to add another operator into the department. We currently have four in the water, so this would make five. But that way we'll have a little more assistance, especially with our backflow prevention and cross- contamination control, whatever I'm trying to say here. And then, let's see here, the next major change that we have goes to the Jeff's favorite heading, the maintenance of wells. We are going to do away with the capital line item in that particular budget or within that. Generally, we have a capital in the wells just to, in case we have any catastrophes happen or if we have to build new buildings like we're doing this year, things along those lines. But we're kind of getting everything to a level where we want it now, so I feel that we can get rid of the capital portion of it. And what I've done is I've just increased the general maintenance of it by thirty thousand and then just done away with the capital altogether. So you'll see an increase in that to a hundred and forty-five. But that's just kind of adding a little bit of the capital money and then just doing away with rest. It leaves us enough in case we do have a couple of catastrophes and wells go completely down and have to be redrilled, we will have enough in order to bring those back online. And then I've got a few things that just changed by small amounts. I dropped office supplies down a little bit, rent has increased slightly. That goes with the...
Really, Brent?
Yes. Tools and equipment I brought down a little bit. And then, let's see here, groundwater assessment, that's one of Brent's favorite line items. He always tells me what number goes in there, so if you have any questions on that, you'll have to ask him. And then finally, the last thing is our capital and we're going to put another five hundred thousand in our water mains and that's to add new mains, to replace four-inch mains that need to be upsized and just whatever else that ends up happening, just kind of, it'll take care of that, so... That's pretty much the budget. And then I guess I'm supposed to speak of our annual report. So I put together from 2014 to current, well, it was current at the end of June. But I just basically kind of compared everything with our numbers. It depends on budget, what streets we can actually get to. We try and work alongside the street department in order to replace mains where streets are going to be rebuilt. That way we're not tearing brand-new streets up and things along those lines. So that's why those numbers can sometimes fluctuate. Our new mains skyrocketed in 2016 because we did our Cargill loop and our South Main street extension. So there's a lot of new main that went in on those projects. We've got, so I guess the total from 2014 to now with the new mains is about 2.3 miles of pipe. With our replacement, we had about 1.2 miles of replaced pipe. And then I've just got a few different headings. If you have any questions on them, please let me know, I can kind of explain. What I call water service rehab is anything that involves just working on a meter pit, whether we do just a meter pit rebuild, put a new yoke setter, new valves in, or just a whole new pit, just those kinds of things. And then, of course, we've got new water services. Those are brand-new services that are coming online that we didn't have before, so that's adding into our numbers. We've got our, I've got gate valves and insta-valves. Our insta-valves are the valves that we can install without having to shut water off. And a lot of our gate valves are actually included with our main lines. As we put new main lines in, we have to put new valving in and everything. So that's where a lot of those numbers came from. Our main breaks seem to remain pretty consistent, which is good. We don't want that number to go up. If it goes down, we're happy. But same with service leaks, we had a spike in them in 2014 and 15, but they've kind of tapered off again and hopefully they keep going that way. And then we've just got our meters. Our ERTs are, of course, the radio transmitters that they use to read the meters and everything. So we've currently been trying to upgrade our old ERTs from the original ones that we put in when we first switched over to CBT water to, we've actually switched two different ones now and we're putting in what's called 100W, so they're supposed to be a little bit better ERT, a little more range, a little more power, those kinds of things, so... But I've got a list of the mains that we've done if you have any questions on those. And then our upcoming projects, we're basically just looking at continuing to upgrade our four-inch mains and continue to loop places where we have deadhead lines to try and just increase the efficiency of the system and cleanliness of it, so... Are there any questions?
So as you're doing main replacements, is it similar to like what we do with streets? So we continue, is it just a never-ending battle? By the time we get them all replaced, there'll be time to do it again? Is that pretty much how it works?
Unfortunately, yeah, because...
We'll never get a level where we've replaced everything and we get like ten yards or something? Doesn't work like that? Okay.
Unfortunately not, yes, as we replace more, the ones that we've replaced, they age. And of course, we are putting a different material in. We put in PVC piping instead of ductile iron and cast, which was originally what was being installed. So PVC is supposed to last a little bit longer, so fingers crossed it does. But unfortunately fittings and everything are still made of cast and ductiles, so those could fail on us. We don't have a whole lot.
Maybe you'd get a break at some point where...
That would be nice.
So what's your need for an additional FTE?
Our need?
Yeah.
Well, what we are looking at right now is just, especially with the regulations, we've had to start doing a whole bunch of things that we've never done before with our backflow prevention plan, which includes surveying. We have constant tests coming in. We have to get all that stuff up to date and then we have to report to the state on those. So I'm needing assistance in that because that's kind of my focus right now, which takes me away from my other daily duties. And then, of course, with our increase in the system size and everything, we need assistance there as well. So this is somebody that can basically help where help is needed. So right now, you know, I've got one guy doing valves, one guy doing hydrants, one guy who's trying to plan jobs that can't happen until he pulls the guys off the valves and the hydrants to go help him do the jobs. And so now those aren't being done. We've got mains that we have to flush on a yearly basis. It's just a list of different things that have to be done every year, so...
Couldn't we make him an exempt employee? Yeah, he is.
I am.
I just want to, this is one of those that any time we have a discussion about admin employee, it's something I take serious, I know Jeff takes it serious. We have a long discussion with this when we meet before we bring this to council. This is something that Eric has been talking to me now pretty much since he's taken over the department. We've seen a need as things have increased, but this last year, especially with the backflow prevention program that the health department is now mandating on us, I've seen there are day after day after day where I need Eric to be a superintendent and he's filling in as a, one of the line guys out there in the trenches, you know, doing fixes and, you know, even going out and shutting off people's water and other things. And so I have seen it and that's why I support it because I can see that this department right now with just the four guys in there, we're going to need somebody in there. And as we continue to move along and the more that we do, the big struggle we've had the last, you know, sixty days in that department is all of the utility locates that we've been doing as part of the fiber project. They've basically had one of these four guys that have just been doing nothing but utility locates for the last two months. All my other departments have been doing the same utility locates, but they're staffed heavier and so they've been able to handle that a little bit easier. I don't see that backing off any time in the future, especially with our plans with the fiber project and everything.
I guess my question is, is this a technical operator, somebody that needs to be certified in distribution? Or are you looking for a backflow person administrative assistant?
We have somebody that's backflow certified other than Eric here and I think we can make some adjustments in him and get him switched over to doing mostly just the backflow. But then that'll require us having another operator in the ranks and go ahead and have them come up through the distribution classes.
I should have asked it that way initially.
Yeah. It's just important to me to know, for you guys to know, that this is something that, it's just not Eric asking for. This is something that from my position in my seat, I have seen as something that we needed to address and that's why we brought it this year. Yes, the fees for the water are mine, but it's a good number.
Yeah, so is the rent.
Any other questions or...? Thank you.
Now we'll go to the water treatment plant with Al. And Al's having a good time.
Al always has fun.
Hi, Al.
Hello, Council, Mayor, how's everybody tonight?
Good, yourself?
Doing good, thank you. All right, start with the budget. Budget is, most of it's pretty much the same from last year. There are some increases because water demand has gone up this year quite a bit, so we are anticipating the same thing for next year. So a lot of the items that have increased are based upon that, so I'll touch on those items. The first one is, did increase overtime expenses by roughly three thousand dollars. Currently, we are adjusting our time out there at the plant, working later now just to cover the shifts and make sure that everything's being done properly, filter washing, maxing those hours out. So I'm just anticipating that next year as well. Outside laboratory services, because we are part of the UCMR4, we're required to do that next year because we have a population of over ten thousand people, so we're required by EPA to do that sampling next year. So that's a big sampling requirement for us for next year. One thing that did go down was janitorial because we no longer are having a service master come out to maintain the plant halls and floors, doing that ourselves in-house. CBT water assessment, as usual, those are going up. Three hundred and ten thousand from last year to three hundred and twenty. I think we're looking at another increase next year for 2019, so it's just a yearly increase on those CBT water assessments. Treatment chemicals, again, because we are anticipating higher demands next year, we did bump that up to two hundred and sixty thousand, so... Maintenance on plant equipment, we did increase that as well. Forty thousand because we are getting to the age of the plant, we're twenty years old plus we're pushing that. We're pushing those pumps harder, flock drives, filters, everything a lot harder than we have in the past year, few years. So we increased that as well. This participation fees, as the project moves forward and closer to possibly happening, we go from three hundred and sixty thousand up to seven hundred and twenty thousand. So those are our participation fees. As far as capital improvements, we included the eastern pump station. I believe Brent touched base with you on that back, about the pump station to supply us with more water coming from Carter Lake. Currently, right now, we are maxed out at seven, or eleven CFS. If we could have, get more capacity out of that line, we should appreciate it. Right now, we're maxed out, we haven't done a flow change since July 5th. So we're just based off of that eleven CFS. So as long as Cargill doesn't work on Saturday and Sunday, we can actually fill up that reservoir full again. So we've been getting by there, so that'll help us.
Just a quick question, if Cargill does happen to pick up on the weekend during the summer, is that going to cause you, that's going to really limit your...
You know, on a daily basis, we try to maintain roughly between eleven and twelve foot. We can do that right now. We get down by the end of the week, say Friday, Saturday morning, we're down to about maybe ten, ten point eight, ten point seven feet in that reservoir. Usually not something we're used to, it's a different animal. We're dealing with different flows, you know, higher flows, lower reservoir levels, but it's getting down there. Right now, during the months of, say, June, July and August, those are our highest demand months.
So before it ends up on the front page of the newspaper, we can't treat enough water for Cargill if they go into production on weekends. We are currently working with Northern for a temporary capacity allotment out of the pipeline that would secure us enough water to get us through this time of the year until the pump station is put into place. They have some ways that we can get some additional pipeline capacity from some of the other upstream participants and then allow us to use the western booster station to help push water towards us. And so we're in the process of talking to Northern about hopefully securing that type of temporary agreement until we get the pump station online. So we do see it as kind of a challenge for Al and his crews, but we are working on something that'll hopefully keep us from having any type of limitations.
We're a long ways from not having water. We just have a little less than you'd like to see.
So are we utilizing our capacity lease from Fort Leupton and what we have with quality also?
Yeah, we're maxed out on everything that we've got arranged for right now. And so that's what he's, since July 5th, we've been using every ounce of what we have under contract. So this will require another little deal that we're working with, but we just heard from Northern today on that, so...
You know, and I think what Brent said is really important, that we do have the capacity and everything to get the water that we need right now. What's interesting is, you know, we built this plant seventeen years ago with ten MGD capacity. It's not Miller Genuine Draft, by the way, just million gallons a day. So the, you know, we're used to operating this thing around five. Probably for most of the time, this thing's running about half the capacity we're running now. That's what Al's talking about, as you probably know, is that it's just different. And we knew, and this has all been designed and ready for expansion, when we're ready to go, we have a plan in place, and so nobody's really, you know, surprised. We just know, okay, now we're going to the next plan. And I know, you know, the part of the next plan will be designing the addition for additional capacity. Be looking at additional raw water reservoir spaces. You know, we've acquired the land for that, so we've been planning this. And then with the booster station going on, which will give us additional capacity, we're planning and have planned well ahead of anything that would keep us from being able to provide for the citizens. And I think Al and his guys do a great job and what he's talking about with... And what he's talking about with these additional hours is, you know, at 50% capacity, you can run, you know, 10-hour shifts, and when you hit 80% capacity, now you've got to be there till 11 o'clock. And I was out there today and I've never seen the water that high in all four basins with the, with the filters. They're 20 feet deep and they were probably four feet from the top. And I know you guys are getting ready to probably backwash them and clean them out.
Before we left at 4:00, he was already backwashing filters.
Yeah, and so it, that's not how we usually run the plant, so we're looking at additional hours, additional man, just to make sure that we're operating correctly. It's operating the way it's supposed to.
Yes.
It's just...
We haven't had to operate at that capacity.
No, we have not.
We've never driven this car this fast. And it's pretty exciting.
But it's designed.
But it's designed to drive this fast.
It's designed, it's handling it very well.
So I'm a little curious, I've never noticed Western Sugar operating this late into the year, and they seem to be running a lot. Are they contributing to this water use as well?
Well, plain and simple, yes. Typically, this time of the year, Western Sugar would probably be using us for, on a monthly basis, somewhere around, maybe at the most, maybe 100,000 gallons of water. Last month alone, they used 19 million gallons. That's way beyond anything we've ever experienced with them. They typically are done going into March, about the time that we gear up for outside lawn watering, and so they've never been a summertime factor for us, just plain and simple. They're using more on a monthly basis than La Prino. They're now our number two highest water user in the city behind Cargill. And so that's where Al's, you know, new frustration with having to learn to run this way is coming out of their water usage, and so.
Want to get him some antacids.
Yeah, it's growing pains on our part.
It is.
And we've started conversations with Western Sugar about the water usage, and they have ways to make changes and do things differently, and I think we're going to see some of those things. We've made them aware that, you know, this is not what we see as a typical water usage, and they've got some changes that they foresee at the plant. And we also want to talk to them about just how much they can actually use off of our system before they overuse their allocation. So those conversations have all started.
Thank you.
Any other questions with the budget?
Kudos to your crew.
All right, they're doing good. We're just trying to maximize the filters the best we can, and that's why we expanded our hours later, is just to maximize everything that we possibly can. So filters, we're trying to take them as far as we can, get the most hours out of them instead of pre-washing them more than they need to, so just trying to get the better life out of them.
I have a question about the NISP participation fees.
Yes, sir.
It's doubling next year?
Yes.
Why don't you...
Brent?
Just have a seat up front, Brent.
Sit in the front row.
Everything up to this point has been, we've just been kind of nibbling at this permit that we need to build these projects. And as we get closer to knowing that we're going to end up with a permit from the Corps of Engineers, the participant group has basically stepped up and said, okay, there's a significant amount of the engineering that we're prepared to go ahead and start working on in 2018. And so they want to gather, what was it, $9 million total, I think, from the group, and maybe $7 million. And so next year's the first big jump that we will see, and the majority of that money that we're allocating is just going towards more engineering, towards the final design of the dams, the pipelines, and all that. Then it could potentially be the following year that we will see the next really large jump in engineering, and then we will be docking construction money in the multimillion-dollar range for us, and billions of dollars for the project as a whole, so.
So is this money that we have been paying out, or is this money that we've been stashing away?
We have our NISP fund that we have been collecting off of everybody's, you know, water bills, that we haven't started allocating towards these type of bills. It's one of those that that fund is still relatively small to what our final bill will be. At some point, we'll have to just go ahead and spend that NISP allocated money towards some of these things. What we've been doing in the past, because the steps have been kind of small out of the budget, it was, we just go ahead and budget into the normal water budget, and it just comes out and it gets spent out of the normal water budget. It doesn't come out of those special allocated funds that have been set aside for the NISP project. But at some point, we will have to go ahead and dip into that as we jump towards the bonding stage of the project in a couple of years.
Okay, thank you.
We just got the draft studies back for the water fund, and so we'll be working on modeling that, what does it look like, bringing it to council. You know, a few years ago, we looked at how are we going to pay for NISP, and what are our plans in retiring certain debt, bringing on new debt? What is that going to do to impact the, our rates? And those are the things that we continue to look at, and we'll bring that back to council so that you understand and kind of know, if the timing is what they say it's going to be, what can we look, what are we going to be looking at down the road for rate increases? And then how are we looking on reserves and everything else? Which we're doing, you know, we're selling, obviously, we're selling some water, so that's a good thing.
Thank you.
Just have a seat.
You should just sit in the front row.
Okay, cool. Any other questions on the budget?
No, we probably got a few for Brent.
Sure you do.
Anybody else have any questions for Al?
Just want to touch base also on the year review for 2016. I think you guys got this little memo in your packet. Just want to touch base on a few of those items. One was the storage tank rule that was implemented, that was handed down from the State Department, something that we worked hard on. Basically, it's just keeping a, I guess, better status on what the tanks are doing, keeping them well-maintained. We always had been, but this is just a little more double check that the state wanted us to do. So we spent a lot of time in 2016 making sure all the screens were on their good, seals were still, were in good condition. Flocculation equipment, you guys remember, we placed, everything was made with steel. All the filtered waste pipes and effluent pipes in the drywall were repainted. That was probably the longest project. The guys spent probably six months, not every day, but a period of six to seven months painting all the pipe work down below in the basement. I mean, we're talking 30-inch pipe, 24-inch pipe, all the nuts and bolts just painted blue and brown. Took a lot of time. Also in 2016, we're part of the LT2 enhanced surface treatment rule. Basically, we're just a big testing, another testing that's been handed down, testing the raw water, Kepel spray, DME coli, another thing required by the EPA. We also had zero violations and deficiencies. And if you look at the treated water produced in 2016 was 1.57 billion gallons. The year before was 1.54 billion gallons. This year, I think we're predicted for 1.8. And then you'll see all the chemicals that we use down below. Do you have any questions on any of those items? Go in more detail for you.
We're still working on the scrubber project?
Yes, actually, the notice proceed went out, I believe, Thursday, so 180 days from that day.
Yes.
Any questions?
Good job out there.
Yeah, great work.
Thank you.
Thanks, Al. Waste water collection, Skip, you're just...
Skip to the back of the bus, please. Skip to the back of the bus.
Skip, you're the new guy on the block.
Present mine too if he wants to. I'll just leave it up here for you. All right, now we've changed the other end of the spectrum, so the sewer collection. Again, there's not a whole lot of changes on my budget this year. There's, I made a couple of, a couple of minor, well, there's one major and one minor, and then just a few little things here. The, one of the major, one of the major minor ones, it's, we have dropped the maintenance of collection down a little bit because I'm actually moving that, moving those funds over to the capital main, new mains line item. So basically, what comes out of maintenance of collection, we do spot repairs, any of the O and M that goes on, and then if we have a new manhole, we reline manholes, those all come out of that line item. So we're going to kind of shift focus from that side of it and start looking at trying to do this relining of mains and kind of getting our mains up to snuff on, from where they're at right now. So that one has dropped 60,000, and that 60,000 has been allocated to the capital side of it. Dropped just a few small things, office supplies, telephone, that's the main differences there. And then the last, well, I guess our main replacement, I have moved that 60,000 over and then I'm increasing that by 40,000 because it looks like we can probably do well over 2,000 feet of pipe every year with 300,000 in there with that relining. And right now, we're going to focus on trying to do a lot of those easement areas where we can't do excavation. And if everything goes well on that, we'll use it a little more until we can actually get to the point where we can start doing traditional main replacements where we're actually excavating and installing new PVC pipe and things along those lines. So that one has gone up to 300,000. And then the, we are looking at a new sewer inspection camera and van for this next year. Right now, we are using an Ares camera system, and we're wanting to basically get away from Ares and go with a whole new system. We've had a series of problems just throughout the years with Ares. We've tried to make it work here and there. Unfortunately, it's just not working the way we need it to, and efficiency is beginning to drop. Cameras are in the shop a lot more just because of the way the system is and everything. So we're looking at getting a whole new camera system, but we are also looking at replacing our current camera van. Right now, we have a big box van, and it was purchased in 2006 along with the original camera system. And so we're looking at 11 years old now, and unfortunately, it is a diesel engine, and it does not travel like it should for a diesel. A diesel requires actual movement, and this is sitting more idly, it goes from point A to point B, and so on and so forth. And so it's beginning to show its age and a lot of wear and tear, especially fuel injectors. We actually have eight of them out right now that, it's still running, it's just, if we want to maintain it, it's going to constantly be increasing the maintenance costs on it. Along that, it's also very, very large, and a lot of our alleyways are not very big, so it ends up getting caught on a lot of things. It's very difficult to get into alleyways, easement areas, things along those lines. So we're looking at actually getting a smaller-sized van that all of the camera equipment will fit in and going with a gas engine instead of a diesel engine, so it's a little bit easier on it when we're just traveling around town instead of, you know, because I know we took the van into a mechanic to have him look at it, and that's when we found out the injectors are going out on it. And he recommends that we travel the van at least 30 miles a week, and just highway miles, so actually going out on the interstate and driving it. And so now that's time away from maintaining the system because we have somebody driving out to Wiggins and back and things along those lines. So it's just, it's becoming more of an issue, so that's why we're looking at replacing the whole system. And then the last capital item is the jet truck reserve. The truck was purchased in 2011, or 2012, and so I'm just kind of looking ahead at getting a reserve to purchase a new one when the time comes. So we're hoping, you know, within eight to 10 years, we can look at purchasing a new jet and back truck, so that's what those are. So any questions on the budget?
So what do you have, probably 12,000 actual miles on that van?
Something along those lines, it's not very much at all. Yeah, that poor van, it needs to move and it just doesn't.
Injectors aren't cheap.
Oh, no. Okay, well, then for our annual report, again, I went back as far as 2014, and so we've got, I've got our, it's all in feet, but our main lines that have been cleaned, that's through the jetting operations, main lines inspected with the camera. We generally don't have to inspect every line when we clean them, especially newer PVC lines, they don't require an inspection every year. We do them about every other year when we inspect those, but like our old clay lines, especially where roots grow in, those are an every-year type of thing, just to see if they require extra maintenance when we come in there, if we do have to root cut or anything else additional, if there's repairs that we've been kind of keeping an eye on, they're starting to get worse, we need to look at repairing those types of things. And that's where our spot repairs are for our main line. That's areas that we're just replacing, just sections of main. So if we find an area where a tap came in and the tap has collapsed the main slightly and it's looking like it's not going to last much longer, that's when we'll come in, replace, you know, anywhere from a 10-foot section up to a 50-foot section, and then we'll put in new taps on those as well. So that's what the spot repairs are. Our main line, manholes relined, those are the ones that we're having the, those crews come in and actually put a concrete reliner, or a liner on the inside of these manholes, which is supposed to buy another at least 30 years out of these manholes. So hopefully that pans out like it's supposed to. Our, let's see, our service calls, those are just any time somebody calls in and they're having problems with their drains in their house, and we'll go and check. What we do is we just check our mains to make sure the mains are flowing and then let them know that it's most likely a service issue, unfortunately. So our sanitary sewer overflow diversions, those are actually when we are doing our regular O and M projects, going out, doing our packet program where packets are trying to control grease in the lines. When we're doing things like that, if we find a line that is beginning to back up, it's, or it's just running really, really sluggish, and it definitely needs to be jetted right then and there, that's what those are, is we're catching them before any customers are affected by anything. So that's, my crew is very, very diligent in that, and they're doing an excellent job. And then we haven't had any customers affected by any sanitary sewer overflows, so that's something we're trying to maintain, and they're doing an excellent job, and so. And then our future projects, that's, we're just looking at the relining right now, trying to get as many of our easement lines relined, getting them to a good function again, so. Do I have any questions?
How many guys you got in the collection side? Three?
Two, and me.
Two?
Yeah, I assist when needed, so, but yeah, right now it's two guys. So far, they're keeping up with it. I know over time, we'll probably have that conversation with adding another personnel in that, but right now...
Regulations change.
The what?
Regulations.
Oh, yes.
Change and...
A lot more is going into pretreatment before it even gets out to the plants now, so we'll cross that bridge.
Pretreatment's now Skip's problem.
Yes.
So in its streets that's going out, because I noticed we have people out that are cleaning off the debris off of your sewer entrances, that's the department, that's not his stuff that's going out to have to do that, correct? Because that's pretty impressive with only two people.
Oh, yeah, they maintain the, just the system itself, but yeah, they have to do, they have to constantly be adjusting manhole rings, make sure they have access to them and things along those lines, so.
Well, tell them, they do a good job, and we appreciate what they do, both sides, collection and distribution.
Thank you, we'll let them know.
Keep up the good work.
Thank you, Eric.
Thank you very much.
Now it's Skip's turn?
Yeah, we're not going to skip.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council, my first time in presentation.
We'll be gentle.
We won't hold.
Hello.
All right, I'll be stumbling through it.
We'll be nice. Next time, we won't be so gentle.
Yeah, don't give me any slack next time. So most of the budget that put together is unchanged. There's a couple of line items that we're asking for an increase too, and they're somewhat related. Our sludge removal line item needs increase due to the need to empty our digester to install and remove the old piping that you approved last year. We've been having wolf waste haul it off in a 20-yard dumpster. The little pickup, the little dump truck that we got from Eric just wouldn't be able to keep up with this flow. Also, our outside lab cost has increased substantially because Parker Ag is no longer de-watering our sludge and hauling it to the farm for us. And within that process and their pricing, they were also doing the soil testing and our sludge testing for the 503 regulation for the EPA, and now that's on us, so substantial increase on that line item. You had a chance to look at the budget, and there wasn't really any other drastic changes in it. For capital improvement, for this 2018, we're looking to replace a bar screen. As Mayor knows, bar screens, technology has come a tremendous way in the last 30 years even. In the trickling filter that our plant replaced, it was a manual rake bar screen. That bar screen is still in operation today at Morgan Heights, now I put it to future use.
Glad to see what the good use.
So the bar screen we're looking to replace... Uh, so, the bar screen we're looking to replace is the, is the, uh, east bar screen and that was the original equipment when the plant was put together, so it's just slightly over 20 years old. And it has quarter inch screen in it. We're currently using the west bar screen that they picked up on eBay or something. But it's, uh, it, it's a much finer screen, but even at, even it doesn't do the job that we actually need it to do. The bar screen is the first defense for protection of all the other expensive downstream equipment, pumps and, and such. And so, it's, so it's pretty, pretty necessary. Um, the other capital improvement would be, uh, last year, the council's generous enough to fund for our east digester aeration piping. Uh, that equipment is supposed to be in the first or second week of September. We're trying real hard to get our digester taken down and cleaned out by that time. Um, and so, we're requesting the same for the west digester for the same reasons. It's 20 years, all of that piping down there is brittle from the hot compressed air that's been blowing through it for 20 years. We can't hardly go down and clean anymore, dragging a fire hose around, we're just breaking diffusers off. Um, so, on our annual report, I'm sure you've read it and done the comparisons, I don't need to read all the numbers to you. Um, we're proud to, to show on our average discharge to the river of eight and a quarter milligrams a liter of total suspended solids and 9.5 for biochemical oxygen demand. Uh, most treatment plants, if they say they have 10, 10 water, they're real proud of it and, and so, we're looking real good. We're also doing, uh, a very decent nitrogen removal. We're averaging 10 milligrams a liter going out to the river and we are allowed 20 on any given snapshot test that we take. We're doing, uh, 96 to 98 percent removal of biochemical oxygen van and total suspended solids that come in. We are cleaning the river as we discharge.
That's a true statement.
That's a true statement. Um, we had some major projects that are listed on the bottom down there. We're, we're happy that, uh, and proud to say that the staff did all of this work themselves and we've saved tremendous amount of money if I'm not having it outsourced. Any questions?
Are you going to be looking at, are they going to be pushing the phosphorus?
That's-
Regs?
The, the talk a year ago was maybe in 2022 or 21. Now, they're looking, pushing that back maybe another eight years. So, but we have to keep that in mind. When the phosphorus comes, that'll be a, that'll be a major engineering effort, so.
Yeah, it will. So, how are you settling into your new seat?
Well, I don't know, you'll have to ask everybody else.
Well, the water still looks good, so.
Water's still looking wonderful. Just making sure I'm getting the bills paid when I need to get them done.
Jeannie will let you know if you do not.
They've been very helpful.
Keep up the good work and kudos to the guys at the plant.
I'll do that.
Anybody else have any questions?
Just make sure you keep bringing us the animal stories, you know?
Yeah, we don't, we don't have any, uh, new ones. We had, uh, we have a pair of owls that are swimming around out there in the trees, some hawks, but no rescues lately.
That's good.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right. I think that's everyone for tonight.
Thanks, Brent, for your presentation as well.
Yeah.
I would just say, as I've said in the past, I, I appreciate what all the city staff, your guys' departments do. We couldn't run this city without the staff and the people that we have running it from Jeff all the way down to the people in the streets, so, we appreciate it.
Or under the streets.
Or under the streets. We appreciate what you guys do. Next is the update on the street sales tax initiative, Mr. Brennan.
Thank you, Your Honor. Um, since our last Strictly for Streets update, um, Mr. Wells had a guest review column published in the Fort Morgan Times and I posted a link to that column on our social media and about, that last count, about 1,300 people had, um, seen that column. There were a number of, uh, likes and shares and no negative comments that we saw, so, that's a positive thing. One person who read the column called and volunteered to serve on the citizen advocacy committee that we're trying to form. Um, we also have designed some informational flyers, uh, there was a copy in your table file, um, that kind of give a general idea and broad outlines of what the city is considering proposing to the voters. Um, we will be having a meeting later this week to develop a plan for the distribution of that and other promotional materials that would, uh, will comply with campaign finance regulations and, uh, get the word out. We also direct mailed some letters to key individuals that we hope will assist with promoting the Strictly for Streets initiative if it is placed on the ballot. Um, our next meeting of that group is scheduled for next Monday, the 24th. Uh, we've also heard from a local contracting company that has expressed interest in participating and, uh, possibly, um, contributing some financial support. And, uh, during August, we hope to have city staff visit local civic and service clubs, um, just do kind of presentations, running down the, uh, the what and the why of, uh, this proposal. So, um, I think we're, you know, we're plugging away at it.
And we did get invited to, uh, present at the Rotary Club meeting next Tuesday, so, we'll make our first presentation then.
That was-
By the way, John.
That was my discussion Monday at the radio show and then on V106 as well, so.
Right.
Any other comments on the tax initiative?
At the senior advisory board meeting, um, those members were really excited about this as long as it, the language on the ballot read that it was, yeah, strictly streets. So, I think, yeah, you've got a good branding, um, opportunity there to keep, yeah, strictly streets, nice and snappy.
We are doing streets and alleys with this, correct?
That's a council decision.
Well, I know the majority of it will be.
Has been brought up repeatedly and, you know, I think-
That's the comments that I've heard in the community as well, is there's some areas on the alleyways that need to be addressed.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, and I, I think that's in the flyer that I gave you a copy of tonight, which is kind of just, hasn't been distributed yet. I think I put alleys in that, so. Seems that was the way it was going.
Strictly streets and alleys.
Except for alleys.
Strictly where you drive your car.
Thorough bears within the community.
That's right.
And I can't promise the ballot language, if that's the route we end up all finishing at, would say strictly streets in the plain language of the ballot, but it, uh, typically, these are all drafted to look the same that everywhere else uses. And I would anticipate that it would, uh, ensure that any, whatever the rate city council decides to potentially send up to the voters would say that it is to be used for the following purposes. So, as, as great as the slogan is, it may not make it into the actual ballot language, to be clear, but-
Come on, Jason.
Understood, thank you.
You know, I, I heard from another community member that might live next door to, um, council member Howe, that, uh, his, his daughter works or is going to school at MCC doing, uh, graphic design and was, is really interested in this and I invited her to participate in the committee and, and her slogan that she came up with was, um, "We're 1% away from perfect streets." So, I thought that was interesting, but-
I like that.
So, the, uh, it's, it's gaining momentum and I think there are a lot of people very interested in, in making the community a better place and I, I think it's very positive and we'll see what happens if council decides to put this out there and if people decide to vote in favor. So, it'll be good.
Good. Next is consent agenda, Mr. Brennan.
Thank you, Your Honor. Tonight's consent agenda includes item A, approval of the dispersments and payroll for June and item B, approval of the minutes of the July 5th, 2017 city council regular meeting. All matters on the consent agenda are considered routine business by the council and will be enacted with a single motion and a single vote by roll call. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is deemed necessary, that item should be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately.
I would entertain a resolution accepting it as presented.
Your Honor, I would offer a resolution to accept the approval of the dispersments and payroll for June and the approval of the minutes from the July 5th, 2017 regular city council meeting.
I have a resolution by Christine Castell and a second by Lisa Northrup, vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Public comment and audience participation.
Jenny?
John? No. Seeing none? Reports of city staff and officials?
I have a few things and I know there may be a few other reports by other directors tonight, but first, I, I would like to introduce, uh, Steve Glamire, he's been sitting in the back, he can come up to the microphone if he wants to. Uh, Steve joins us, uh, as of Monday as our new public works director, has many years of experience and, uh, yeah, we can clap for him.
Yeah, right.
He seems excited.
He comes to us by way of, uh, City of Delta, uh, has a lot of experience in engineering and, and municipal work and I'll turn it over to him to introduce himself a little bit, but we're really excited to have Steve on board, uh, and he's going to do a great job, so.
Well, thank you, Jeff, and, uh, greetings, Honorable Mayor and members of the council. It's my pleasure to come to you from, uh, Delta, Colorado, where I grew up and I was born and raised and worked, uh, for the City of Delta for 24 years in various capacities, but, uh, my last, uh, position there was utilities and public works. So, I had brunch job and my job in Delta. Uh, Delta's a population of about 9,000 folks, very similar to Fort Morgan farming community, big migrant population, worked in the farming. And, uh, I'm very excited to be here and, uh, I'm day two on the job. Somebody said, uh, "Are you getting your feet wet?" And I said, "I wish they were wet, they're on fire." So, uh, you know, I've spent a lot of time, uh, out in the community and, uh, Jeff's taken me on several tours and the staff here is excellent. Uh, they're certainly working hard to get me up to speed, but I'm just very excited to be here and, uh, help you all in any capacity that I can. Really excited to move my wife out here. She's at, uh, at home in Delta still. Uh, we have a house in her contract, housing is very difficult to find here. And, uh, we close on that house at the end of August, so she'll be out early September. Um, and, uh, we're excited to, uh, be a part of the community and get very, very involved. I was at Rotary today and, uh, and headed there next Tuesday as well, or is it next Tuesday that we're speaking on the, uh, One Cent Sales Tax Initiative and I'm excited about that as well. So, looking forward to working with you all and, uh, please feel free to come by and, uh, let me know what's on your mind. So, thank you very much. Questions of me?
Welcome, we've been waiting.
No, I want everybody to look at Brent's face when I say this next thing. Uh, just watch it. Uh, so, one really important thing about Steve is that he's a civil engineer licensed and educated at Colorado State University.
Who are, right? The, the only, uh, engineering institution in the state of Colorado.
So, just get ready for it. I'm just, I'm giving you a heads up there.
Then you get to move on to a real college at, uh, Fort Collins, so.
Kevin is not an engineer.
No, Kevin, Kevin is a doctor.
And who has a son with an engineering degree from CU.
Oh.
Is that cause you wouldn't pay for CU?
Yeah, I did, they give those out on occasion.
Charity work.
Uh, I have one question, how's your working relationship with C-Dot?
Well, i- in Delta, it was great. Of course, we were region three over there, but I certainly had a great relationship with those folks and looking forward to meeting the, the folks over here, so.
Wonderful.
Yeah.
Welcome to Fort Morgan.
Thank you.
Glad to have you and I know, uh, you'll be a good fit for the, the crew, Brent's. Glad to have a little bit of taken off his plate.
Yeah, for sure.
And we're, and we're unloading quickly.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
We're unloading quickly.
I'm drinking from a fire hose, so, I get it.
We'll be seeing a lot of you, I'm sure.
Well, on that note, Brent and Josh both, thanks for picking up the extra slack and, um, looking forward to getting you into the community and getting your feet wet so they're not on fire.
Very good. Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Welcome aboard.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Steve. And one other, uh, announcement that I have, just wanted to, you were yesterday in Haxton, they had a special presentation for George Michael, uh, who passed away earlier this year. Some of you may know George, some of you may not. Uh, if you saw George, he was a man without a neck. He was a solid, big guy, but, uh, for his entire career, grew up, born and raised in Haxton, Colorado, he was their public works director. Um, was very, uh, helpful to the City of Fort Morgan in a lot of different ways as it relates to MEAN, um, very supportive of us taking over some of the, uh, um, or I guess a lot of the leadership at, at MEAN and, uh, was just a generally good guy and his family was, uh, at their city council meeting. I went, um, several other city managers from the area went, uh, and I know, uh, and then CAMU representatives were there to present him posthumously with an award, um, which is, uh, an award given by Colorado Association Municipal Utilities for, for someone who has done a lot to impact municipal utilities around the state. And, um, it, it really was an honor to be there because if, if you knew George, he was a really good man and he was really good at what he did and always friendly to everybody. So, uh, we were represented there to, to help his family and, and also, uh, his community. You know, the mayor up there was hired by, um, George to dump trash when he was 15. And, and he's like, "And he treated me the same when I was 15 as he did when I was the mayor." So, he's, "I guess that was good." So, uh, just, you know, wanted to point that out and, and let you know that we were very supportive of one of our, um, regional communities that supports us, so. And with that, I know Brent's got an announcement, I know the chief's got an announcement.
I was hired from a lowly position within the city.
Do you get treated the same way?
No.
Depends on the day of the week.
Um, just a quick update on the fiber project and we're hoping by the end of the week, we'll have all the conduit in the ground. We're, they're doing the last couple of runs, we've got most of our crews out of town and they've just got a couple of crews that are in. Uh, they continue to clean up some of the, um, messes and things that got broken. And so, I still encourage people to call the city, call me, um, look on the website, get ahold of somebody, we'll make sure anything that got disturbed or broken and make sure that those things are fixed as the crews leave town. Um, once all the conduits in, they've still gotta, um, pull the rest of the fiber, which they're getting pretty close on, and then we've got some splicing and issues to do, but, um, still way ahead of schedule for what we had laid out and everything seems to be going along just fine. We just are trying to get it all finished up and we're hoping this will be the week that we can say we're done running conduit. And I know the rest of my utility guys will be happy so they're not doing locates every other day, so. But anyhow, just a quick update on that.
There's a couple of bore, it looks like boring holes in asphalt down by Coleman and West Street, is that part of that?
Yes, and they're still patching all those. Um, if you, if, I don't know if anybody noticed, when they were driving down railroad tonight, there's a whole series of cones down the road on the side. They're going back through and either cold patching asphalt or putting in some concrete mix and everything in there. And so, they're getting all of the hard surface patches done, they were just full of sand up till now. And so, they've got a crew running around that are trying to get all those fixed, but granted, we drilled a lot of holes in the road surface, so if we missed any, that's why I'm encouraging people to go ahead and make sure they contact us so we can get them fixed properly, so nobody falls.
These are still wide open, so.
Okay, okay, I'll have them check those tomorrow.
Not even sand.
No, there's no sand.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brent.
Just a reminder for everybody, National Night Out is Tuesday, August 1st, 4:00 PM to 8:00 PM at City Park. Uh, we're pretty excited to host this, it'll be our first time and, uh, I want to personally invite everybody to attend.
Looking forward to it. And then with that, we are going to change council start time-
Yes.
-that night?
We'll be starting at 8 o'clock.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll start when, when that's finished.
Okay. And we'll have two executive sessions afterward.
Well, at least, at least three.
At least, at least.
Cause Clint will be ready, you know, right about school time and everything, so I think we should do at least two.
Absolutely.
And I'll be in Nebraska at the...
Are you sure?
Yes, I'm sure this time. I'm sure you'll be sure this time, and so I'll miss the party, I'm really disappointed in that, but while I'm gone, we could do five or six executive sessions for Clint.
No, I don't see why not.
Okay, just if you wanted, Clint, we could.
So, will we have a celebrity guest person fill in for you?
We will.
It will be trending.
Okay.
It will be trending.
Can't wait.
I have a question about Vicki Street, we've done some work there. Are we anywhere near getting that fixed? They had someone ask me today.
How come he doesn't have to answer that? Stay tuned.
He doesn't even know where Vicki Street's at.
He's buying a house over there.
It's in my ward.
Yeah. Obviously, we tried to coordinate a little bit closer to doing the water line rebuilds ahead of the asphalt jobs this year, and once again, I don't know, we still seem to struggle with the timing of these things, and so the water line work's been done, we've done some additional valve work over there. The concrete crews that are having to do all the curb and gutter and ADA improvements are, is, they're taking longer than we anticipated over on Cove, where we did a main replacement we're going to repave over there. This goes back to all of that ADA issue where once we touch the street, we have to bring everything up to, you know, meet those standards, and it's really been using all of the resources of that concrete company to get Cove done. We're anticipating Vicki and that area will be smoother and easier because there's wider rightaways in there and there's more room to work. If you're familiar with Cove, you realize we don't have a lot of room to work with some of those ramps and things, so we're hoping once we get them off of Cove, get over to Vicki, and then we can roll through the concrete and then be ready for asphalt work in August, so, but we're still several weeks out on paving.
Thank you, I have another question for you. Porch lights, it's my understanding that the city pays the, for the utilities, for porch lights to be on, but only in certain parts of town, can you clarify that situation?
I wasn't here when all that happened, but, yeah, on me, no. There are, there are sections of town that the porch lights on the houses that were built are actually wired in, in front of your electric meter at the residence, and there's a simple low amperage fuse on that, and so we maintain those and people are allowed to use those porch lights, and the city does pick up the electrical use that's on that. We use some very low amperage fuses, so people choose not to try to, you know, jumpstart their cars and run block heaters.
Christmas lights.
Christmas lights and everything else. And so, we get a lot of phone calls, especially come Christmas time, where people are new in their homes and they start plugging in everything, that porch light trying to get as much free electricity as they can, but that's, they were intended for just porch light use only. There, the newer subdivisions, that trend wasn't followed, whether that was a policy decision, I'm not for sure, but it just wasn't followed and...
That was a point where you had to have your house wired at that point in time, the earlier houses had the wiring for the porch light to be segregated. That's something that a lot of people haven't spent a little bit of extra to do on the newer houses, therefore now we have some of them that do and some that don't, but originally Fort Morgan was listed as a city of lights, and they did the free porch lights.
Many years ago, when I moved into my first house, we were kind of making it habitable, and we did something to blow the circuit, and for the longest time, I thought it was the light fixture. And somebody said that the city could do it, and it took a very quick call, and someone was right there, and then we had a porch light. And it was wonderful. And I just wonder how many of our residents may realize that if their porch light isn't working, it may be that the circuit has blown or something, and the city can come and turn that on, potentially.
It's not a circuit, it's just a screw-in type fuse that they have to put in, so it's a very low voltage fuse for that single light. We did have people that were trying to run Christmas lights and skill saws.
Yeah, we probably do have enough residents now that don't realize that that was a program, and so that's probably a good public service message.
And how would people, I guess maybe that's the public service, how would people know if they are in that area where...
Plug in your Christmas lights.
Yeah, it's one of those that if you've changed your light bulb in your front porch fixture and it continues not to work, it's probably...
No, 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 I mean, how do you know if you are in that part of town that...
I don't even know if we have it mapped out, Lisa, to be honest with you.
Okay.
So, like, I think that's the easiest way, if you keep trying to change out your front porch light with a good light bulb and it's not coming on, contact the city.
I just wanted to know if I'm paying for my light bulb.
We will, yeah.
I guess you can wait, doesn't it?
Yours I'm not for sure, I'd have to check, so.
We'll wait. Wait, wait, wait.
Next is biz meetings and announcements. Mr. Brenner.
Thank you, Your Honor, we have a couple of bids now, sealed bids for the East 7th Avenue Electric Distribution Line rebuild until 3:00 p.m. on August 1st, and sealed bids for the sale of city, surplus city property consisting of one Mack Fire Truck until 3:00 p.m. on Wednesday, August 3rd. Under meetings, the Golf Course Advisory Board is scheduled to meet on the 19th at 5:30 p.m., I guess that's tomorrow, at Quail Dunes, and the Heritage Foundation meets the 27th at 4:00 p.m. at the Museum Community Room. The next City Council regular meeting will be on August 1st, and that will be an 8:00 p.m. start after the festivities in City Park. Paul mentioned the National Night Out event on August 1st at City Park, that is also a Party in the Park night, so there will be the barbecue and concert in conjunction with the National Night Out activities, and two more, well, now one more Coffee with a Cop session, they had one today, and they will have one on July 27th from 4:00 to 5:00 p.m., and they're both being held at the new pop-up community center, and we have a couple of vacancies coming up in August on our Historic Preservation Board, and we encourage people to apply if they're interested.
Some of the people that were here tonight, maybe some of the people that came tonight would be interested in participating.
And that is all. Anything else before the council? Meetings adjourned.